Yep. We have two public hearings tonight, three items of new business.
We only have one, three lakes is pulled off.
Oh. Did they say what?
The mailings.
Oh, that's too bad. We still have to do the mailing for the next time they show up. And anyway, five items of new business. First public hearing and only public hearing, Aerostar Petroleum.
Can we approve last month's minutes first?
You could have done it.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes of the October meeting as received, or do you have any changes?
No.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Another official. Okay, Aerostar. Aerostar is here because they ran out of time. Just over two years into approval and they're canceled. The site plan and everything, so technically they're starting over. That's why we have the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That kind of summarizes it. Can this go on paper?
Yep, you're good.
Should I turn to the audience more or?
No, back up.
I'll probably hear.
A little bit, okay.
Camera, no, now you're blocking the camera. I need the camera on the floor. Right there is good, yeah.
Actually, I've got some future versions also. It's the same thing you have on the big board.
I wonder why it's always a gap, isn't it? I don't know why it should have been running again.
So Glenn Smith, engineer for the project Aerostar Petroleum. Preet Kujjar, owner of Aerostar, also here today. The audience, so as the chairman said, this is a project, let's see, Woodburn Motor Station, kind of between the intersection of Route 42 and Route 52, coming into Woodburn. And right now, there's been a gas station on that property for many years. It's a 0.9 acre parcel, less than an acre, and it has a small convenience store now and gas pump island on the property. What Preet Aerostar wants to do is basically knock down the old building and knock down the old, basically, the old gas pump islands are encroaching to setbacks and build do. So intent is to build a 40 by, or 60 by 80 foot convenience store, new building, which would be very similar to the mobile building. They have, these are the example on Anwala Lake Road and 42 and Montesalvo across McDonald's, very similar building to that. And also build a new fuel pump island with a canopy over it. And this plan also has a drive around, service drive to a pickup window for, I know the intent was originally to do Dunkin' Donuts in there, I'm not sure if that's still the intent, but to have a coffee, doughnut shop and maybe a pickup at the window. I don't want to go inside. So back in October of '23, we did get the site plan approval from the board for this. Also a special permit approval because it required a special permit in that zone for gas and service stations with several conditions, and most of the conditions were a follow-up DOT because we're on two separate DOT highways. It's quite a permitting process. So that's basically what's been done for the last two years. We've gone through DOT. The site plan is essentially exactly the same as it was back then, except we've added sidewalks along both road frontages, both Route 42 and Route 52, frontage DOT on sidewalks. We've added some underground groundwater separator. All the water coming off the site from the high end on 52 is collected in drainage system along Route 42 side and conveyed through low water separator. And then it goes to a subsurface detention system, which is basically two 36 inch diameter pipes that are about 40 feet long. It detains the water and leaks it slowly. All that water goes across 42 in a 36 inch pipe and gets dumped into the prison fields. And for some reason, the DOT felt that we were adding more water to the prison field. It's really not, we're not really increasing the impervious area, but nevertheless, we put these stormwater detention in for that. So that's essentially yet, the building, the gas pumps, the canopy is still exactly the same as before. We just kind of updated some things with DOT and had the satisfying new rate issue permits once we get the planning board done. Okay.
Okay, do we have anybody in the audience who wants a question? Speak, answer, anything? I'm going to leave the public hearing, I'm going to close the oral part of the public hearing. Leave the written part open till our next one. I think next month you should still do a public hea, you have a public hearing. We'll, we'll go over the secret on it and see how many, what changes have been made and see what advice we get on it. Perhaps we can get it done, perhaps not. Let's see what comes up.
This is an unlisted action.
Do they have to do a 239 again?
The last 239, we did it before, obviously, the 239 then recommended approval of modifications. The modifications were basically complying with whatever DOT wanted, so we've done that.
And I, and I checked as long as there's no material changes to the plan, which is just the drainage improvements, then it shouldn't need to go back.
We're going to hit this one, it's number one on the new business, so we have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Come in there. Nobody had any after, so then we'll see you later.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, under old business, Matier Road. The conditions previously approved subdivision to replace the homeowner's association with the declaration to provide the owner of each lot to share equally in cost and maintenance. I don't.
Yeah, so a little bit of a rehash, Matier Road subdivision is on Matier Road in Hurleyville. It is a subdivision consisting of seven residential lots and one conservation lot. The residential lots are between 2.65 and 6.9 acres. The conservation lot is about 123 acres. There are a number of requirements, one of which is a conservation easement, which I'm trying to negotiate, work out with Richard Baum. We had an entity that was going to tentatively agree to it, but their conditions were abhorrent. And so we, we are now trying to get the town of Fallsburg to agree to be the conservation grantee. So that's another issue. Another obligation that we have is to maintain the SWIP and to maintain a road that goes from Matier Road through each lot and to the conservation easement. And without thinking, I suggested to the planning boards that we would have an HOA to manage the SWIP and also maintain the road. On further thought, an HOA is going to be a real problem. First of all, I think I might need an operating plan and approval from VAG from an HOA. That's probably a $10,000 to $20,000 proposition. I could apply for a waiver. The waiver forms are outrageous. It's an 18-page application. There's an application form, there's 12 affidavits. And then even if we have a waiver of an operating plan, I still have to have a separate corporation for the HOA with directives, rules, and regulations. And I really didn't take this thing through. I figured there's no big problem with only two requirements for maintenance of the road and the SWIP. An alternative plan, which every HOA uses and every, every subdivision uses is called a declaration of covenants. A declaration of covenants is nothing more than a filed instrument with the Sullivan County Clerk's office, which basically will say that the owners of each of the lots in this subdivision, as well as the conservation lot, will be subject to the following requirements. Maintaining the SWIP, maintaining the road, and all the provisions dealing with it. It's a, it's a legal document. It's filed with Sullivan County Clerk. And because it is filed with Sullivan County Clerk and it will refer to each of these seven lots and the conservation lot, that each parcel will be bound by it. In addition to that, the filed map could also say that each lot is subject to a declaration of covenants. So that was, so this is nothing more than a simple document that we would prepare, subject to Dylan's approval, which will have the exact same effect as an HOA. I don't need AG approval. I don't need a separate HOA corporation. I don't need supported directives and all that comes with it. So that's my proposal, and that is to change the conditional approval of this board from the, from the, from an HOA to a declaration. Once again, it's going to be subject to Dylan's approval, as the HOA was supposed to be subject to Dylan's approval, to make sure that this protects each homeowner or that a required each homeowner to maintain the SWIP. And there's also enforcement provisions. For example, in your typical covenant, a declaration of covenants, if, if one of the homeowners does not pay their fair share, then their share becomes a lien against their property, just like any HOA. So this is an easy substitute for a homeowner's association and has the same legal effect, but it's one document that's recorded and the map can have the same reference. And in fact, every deed will say that it's subject to a declaration of covenants. So whoever buys the property will know that it's subject to it. Anybody who buys the property, who wants a title search, will know that it's subject to a declaration of covenants. So that's my application to change the requirement from an HOA to a declaration of covenants. Once again, subject to Dylan's approval to make sure that each homeowner is protected and that each homeowner knows what their obligations are and that each homeowner will, and including the owner of the conservation lot, will basically maintain the SWIP and maintain the road.
Yeah, we've been going back and forth on this one for some time and, you know, I spoke into the town attorney about it and, you know, our thought has been that a CPS 7 HOA would be more appropriate, which is a more simplified version than the declaration. Because the issue with the declaration is, you know, five years, 10 years, no one at this table is still around. You know, what happens? It's forgotten and it could be a situation where then the enforcement goes on to the town to, A, figure out that it needs to enforce it, whereas the HOA is something you can act on simpler, so it's not going to be wasted attorney's fees and things like that. So I mean, that, that's kind of the concern we have with the declaration, is that the enforcement is going to fall on the town.
Well, Dylan, the declaration is a permanent document. It's binding forever. And it's not just a ten-year document. And the HOA doesn't have to enforce it either. The HOA could be non-active and it can be passive. So I don't, you know, the waiver, the waiver is outrageous. It's 18, I've provided, I think I provided a copy to the planning board, the waiver is 18 pages with 12 separate documents and a filing fee, and then I still have to do the HOA. I, I can't understand why the declaration does not have the same legal effect as an HOA. It's done all the time. Every single subdivision has it. So I, I just, I know Richard Baum came up with the idea of the waiver, but you know, sometimes we lawyers kill deals rather than facilitate deals. And, and this is one way to really make this difficult. Now, this is a type of development that should be encouraged and not, and not hindered by the extra legal or documentarily work that adds costs to a developer. This is the perfect development for the town of Fallsburg. We have a raw sewer, we have raw water, there's no impact on the water, and we have a conservation easement of 123 acres. I can't, I, and I know, Richard and I have been going back and forth on this. I have no, and he came up with a suggestion about a waiver. But it makes no sense to do a waiver on an HOA when we can have the exact same legal effect as a declaration.
Is there any change in the ownership of the conservation land?
The developer is going to own the conservation lot and we are working with the town. The state of the town will be the grantee, and that's another issue.
Well, that's not really, I.
I thought the Orange County Land Trust was involved with that.
Yeah, they wanted thousands and thousands of dollars in escrow. They wanted all kinds of warranties, all kinds of conditions. They must think that we're, we're giving them the honor of that talk, quite frankly, instead of, instead of 123 acres.
If they don't do it, then what's going to end up is the town of Fallsburg is going to end up doing the same scenario.
Well, yeah, but this.
And they're going to be liable for it.
Well, no, we've, we've agreed to provide for payment for any inspections. All you're going to need is one inspection a year, that's going to take a half a day. You have to just go on the property, make sure that nobody has built anything on it. And so, once again, the town, if the town agrees to accept it, and we have all kinds of identification provisions, provisions for insurance. So that's a totally different issue.
This is one of my favorites.
Yeah. Yeah, we can't, we can't do it.
We don't, I don't have the knowledge to know what to write on this one at all. Totally out, different from anything we've done. The only thing I can do is ask, I, we keep meeting with our attorneys and see if you guys can come to some agreement that we can, we can live with. Because we don't, we don't know anything about this.
So I have, I have, I only brought one copy with me. And I'll leave it with you and you can make a copy, Ken can make a copy.
Give it to me.
And this is basically a, as long as you say I have it here, this piece. I thought I had it. You know, I have a habit of misplacing stuff.
That's right, you haven't had a meeting.
But I can't, I can't send.
You email me.
I can send the, the board a copy of a declaration of covenants for Emerald Green, which of course is like 10, 15 pages because they have all kinds of requirements of how buildings are going to be built and how roads are to be maintained and how lots are to be maintained. But I could send that to the board so the board can review it. And I can send Dylan a copy. I'm sure Dylan is, has experience doing this.
I would be very happy if you guys could come to some agreement because it's so far out of any expertise that we have to evaluate it. I don't know, I don't know what we do, right?
Yeah, let's set up a conference with Richard, Ken, if you can be available, just to discuss the SWIP and what type of costs we'd be carrying on that. Because I think another key aspect of it is making sure that there's an escrow that's sufficient or something as far as replenishing. So I think those are kind of the, the two pieces.
Yeah, I suggest an escrow of $5,000, which I, I kind of estimated that a half a day cost for a visit to the property would be about $250. So you're talking about $20, $20 years of an escrow. And if the town wants more than $5,000 escrow, that's something that's negotiable. But we offered to put up the $5,000 escrow. And there's all kinds of other provisions up in the proposed declaration. Uh, excuse me, the proposed conservation easement. But Dylan, perhaps you and I can sit down with, with Richard and see if we can work this out.
Yeah, let's have a phone call or conference and discuss it and see what we can come up with. I think the, the bigger piece is going to be the conservation easement though. So I think you really need to get in front of the town board to discuss whether they're willing to, to accept it. Because that'll, that'll be a much bigger problem if they're not.
Well, the problem, the problem that I have is fine, and Helen has been helpful. There are very few organizations now that are willing to do a conservation easement, especially in a small lot like this. I've known, I've done some conservation easements in the past with the city of New York. And they were very happy for the conservation easement. And they didn't require, some of the requirements that are now being proposed. So perhaps we can have a conference with the three of us and see if we can work out a solution for both issues. But, but once again, this thing has been hot and fire for a long time. So Dylan, if you and Richard can get together shortly and see what we get there.
All right.
Thanks.
Yeah, because I have no clue. I often have no clue, but this time I admit it. I mean, Dylan sets a memorandum explaining the position, it's four pages of searchlights, which I have never been able to wait for. So we're going to leave it to the attorneys. Does everyone agree with that?
Why don't we follow the board and see what they think?
Well, I'm doing that right now.
I agree.
Okay. I have two, three, four. We have, we have the votes for it. So we want to make a motion to, to leave it to the attorneys to discuss and bring back a solution that everybody's happy with at the middle meeting. Let me do that. Motion to table the application.
Motion.
Second.
Who's the first? You.
Paul, I'm second.
All in favor? Any again? I'm ready to do it. Three lakes is off it. Hasbro Estate. Now, Hasbro Estate has been in front of us for years. And can somebody tell me where we are with it?
Good evening.
Good evening. You're the somebody who. The purpose is we're putting your name. Say your name.
Joe Fow, Peter Zachar Fow. I've got Tom Shepstone here also. Working on the SECR documents and Nathan Bernhaas as well, one of the owners. As you probably are all aware, this is the second phase of the Hadbro Estate project. We had come in here previously with 50 units, as, which was the phase two portion of the project. And when we did come here, we were told that there was an issue with town water and that there was none available at this particular time for the, for the project. And what ended up happening was we had some discussions about SECR because SECR on this project, a negative declaration was granted for both phases, phase one and phase two. We went around here at the planning board meetings and also a number of workshops to see how we could evaluate that and move forward. And at one of the meetings, as you recall, because we were not going to be able to maintain our, our approval with those 50 lots, what we had decided to do, and I think this board had also given this lesson, is that we, because we had to go back and rework things and rework SECR and also be put back on, we'd hopefully a list when the water becomes available. We modified the project from 50 to 64 units. Basically the same, we extended the cul-de-sac out about 150 feet and added four units on the, on the low side of the loop. What we, as also as part of the package which we have submitted, we updated the plan set and we updated the SWIP to accommodate that. And we've also responded to Ken's previous SWIP comments, which he had a number of comments on the previous SWIP. That was all included. As well as part of the submission, Tom had submitted a supplemental SECR document. And what we're here to do tonight is hopefully move things forward in this capacity. And the ultimate goal is to, the wording is to, I don't know, readopt an act, but reaffirm or?
I believe we settled on there's an amendment.
Amendment, okay.
Process in the SECR.
Yes.
So that's why we had asked you to, you know, put together basically an amended SECR package.
Right, which, which includes the part one and two VAF as well.
And I have to apologize because I was preparing for the meeting and for some reason, the hard copy of Tom's work never made it into my packet. So I'm like, what are these guys doing? He said that we were supposed to submit updating. So I apologize. I would like to just look through it and, and make sure that, you know, if I have any questions. But for now, the SWIP has been updated, the site plan has been updated to reflect the 64 units. But in my file, I had a traffic study that was updated just a few months ago this summer. But it was for the 50, not the 64. Has that been updated yet?
That is what, our traffic consultant is waiting for the town's traffic consultant to verify that the methodology of the 50 units was okay. And he said it's really not a whole lot to do, but he wants just to verify with the town traffic consultant that his methodology is, is, is okay.
Because the point in redoing the traffic study was not only the situation has changed with the water, but as you guys know, there's, you know, several developments that have happened in the past four years and there's a traffic mitigation fund, so we wanted to make sure that all of that was accounted in there, just like the other developments.
And, and the traffic mitigation fund is, is addressed in the supplement as well. But yes, I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with that as far as the updated traffic study as well.
Jen, could you follow up with the town's traffic consultant or whatever? Yeah, you just make sure that they have that on their list. I'll take a look at what you resubmitted and Dylan as well. Did you get a copy of that by any chance?
Any electric copy?
Yes, I just got that today.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look.
Okay, sounds good. So Dylan and I will both look at the SECR package, what you might be having questions, if you have any questions. And my understanding from the work session was the way that you were going to address the water capacity issue is that you were going to see if you could get a letter or something in writing from DOH basically saying that there would be no impact because obviously you're not going to be able to get holding permits or anything until water is available.
Yeah, and that, we're hoping to have that shortly.
Okay, but you've had discussions with them and?
Well, we've adopted, we've put our, dressed letter together, so yes.
Okay, sounds good.
So will it be conditional approval pending water?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to amend to the negative declaration, publish it and do all that, and it would be similar to the ones that we've had, you know, sort of in the past.
But if, if say we approve the conditionally, does the clock start running? They have two years. And if the water doesn't show up in two years?
Yeah, it's a little older.
Well, again, it's just like anyone else. I mean, I, I think the applicant just wants to, quote unquote, get in line, right? And, and so if everybody else is standing in the same line, you know, so at least that way they're not, their hands aren't tied because they don't have site plan approval. They just have a negative declaration for SECR purposes because that was done for both phases, but they don't have site plan approval for the phase two yet.
So the position is that they don't have site plan approval, they're not aligned?
Correct, Ken? Right? They're on the list, they're on Ken's list, but they're not technically in line. There's two lists.
Do we have a, I'm sorry, go ahead. We have projects like in Lachsheld Drake that were approved that's going on two years ago. And there is, who has a copy of that complete list? And is that privy to the planning board?
Yeah, the list is available. I think you're thinking about PJ Estates is one of the ones that have conditional approval, but lacked water capacity. The other one that's trying to get a conditional approval is Lobster Junior. And so they'll be back before you soon. Those are the two. I'm aware of Zimmerman was one of the ones that received approval and then got full, full approval due to the improvements to the water system that we made last year. So that's kind of what we're doing. We have three or four different projects now, hopefully that will improve the water in that area. And then this allows them, once that becomes available, they're ready to go as opposed to doing their SECR process, doing their SWIP, doing final plans. So they're, they're ahead of the game. They're ready to go when the water becomes available. That, that's the intent of this.
And that, so there's, there are sort of two sort of groups of projects hanging out there, right? There's one or two that have received site plan approval and there's just waiting for the water to become available and then they're sort of ready to go. And then there's three or four that are basically in a holding pattern because we told them we can't complete SECR, we can't complete the site plan review process until there's a solution to bringing more water available. This is a little bit of a unique situation. We talked about this during the work session because it is a two-phase project that had SECR already completed, right? Everybody else is in a holding pattern because we can't complete SECR until we have a solution to the water problem. These guys had a previous negative declaration that will need to be amended to reflect the fact that, you know, there's a situation with water capacity and it won't be able to move forward, but they essentially want to get on that first list because those are the projects that will get water first before the ones that are basically waiting but don't have formal approval, if that makes sense.
I know.
So the negative deck is conditional?
I'm going to have to defer to Dylan on the technical, you know, sort of part of it because, you know.
That's, that's an issue. Because we've had that problem before.
Yeah, and the issue with a conditional negative declaration is you can only issue one if there's something that's physical that you know in the near future is going to be. So we knew a tank was going in last year, so six months before we knew and you could approve conditionally based on that tank going in. And then once the tank was in, that basically negated any of the. And then once the tank was in, that basically negated any of the issues of not having water, at least for those projects. And if you remember, I think before the tank was in, it was basically used up pretty quickly. So that's typically how they're done. I'd have to look into this one to see if it would be conditional or not.
This would be conditional, Tom, this would be.
Because I don't think that came up during the work session at all.
Is it a ton or an listed? It's an unlisted action, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so if it's an unlisted action, at least legally you can do a conditional negative declaration, but whether or not, you know, it needs to be tied to a specific condition, I guess, is the, you know, is the question. I think the point in them being here today was to reintroduce, right, the site plan, particularly with the additional units, so that we can, you can continue your site plan review and we can kind of work on SECR on somewhat of a parallel track. And then we'll figure out what the right path goes.
Right, and in this case, you don't need the conditional SECR to slow down the progress because we have two things. One, the map won't be signed, Art, you won't sign the map. And I won't issue a utility permit until the water is built. So this one could get a SECR process completed without having to be conditional because of the type of action.
That's how we said.
Yep, and that was the idea behind having something in writing from DOH that, you know, that basically substantiates in writing that there won't be an impact because of the water capacity, because these safeguards are in place. If that makes sense.
Now, is this a passive sewer plant or is there sewer?
No, this is actually, the Phase One sewer is in and the actual goes to a easement through the Phase Two site and comes out this direction. So we're actually just timing it. We're just timing for the disdisseorder, which is, it's all by gravity.
So that's been approved through the town?
It goes through the new pump station, which we're in the process of adding new pumps to that station to accommodate this development, Zilla and Road and Land Sands. Yes.
And treatment capacity wise, election break is...
Still at capacity.
So who's working on the negative deck to write out a resolution?
Well, between Dylan and I, I think we need to look at what Tom submitted in a little bit more detail. And then we can bring back, you know, any questions that we have. But this is the first time that we, you know...
And if you want another work session, we'd be fine with that if that...
Okay, no, sounds good.
Okay, any more directions from the board? Everybody know what they're doing?
And I'll research just the issue to flesh that out as far as conditional negative deck versus negative deck.
I'm very new to the conditional negative deck, and it has been in the past.
Shouldn't be the exception, certainly not the rule.
If we have a good reason for it, rational to back it up.
Right. And again, this is a somewhat unique situation because they did have prior, you know, sign off on SECR. So that's really the only reason why we're kind of going through this process is because it is a unique situation. Otherwise you would be...
You want to be careful, you don't want to set precedent.
Yeah, exactly. You don't want to set precedent, but you don't want to penalize.
If you have a paper, it's right, it won't speak.
Yeah.
And that's the piece that makes it a little funky. It's just the amendment of the neg deck with potential... Yeah, so we'll... The conditional part with the amendment is a little weird. So we'll dig into it. This can't be the first time it's happened.
Arthur, does it make sense, since this is sort of, you know, a re-introduction to the project? It's been a couple of years since it's been in front of anyone. Have you been in contact with like the fire department or anything? The usual, you know, sort of folks that we have take a look at these plans at an early stage? You think it's helpful or...
Can I just say, you're putting a lot more out, isn't it?
Yeah, a couple more.
Yeah, okay. Do you want us to send it to the fire department directly?
Yeah, you'll send it to the fire district. Locksheld Lake Fire District.
They've sent them certified, so they...
They've sent them certified, yes.
Anything else? Was there a problem with runoff with adjacent neighbors in the road?
That was clear enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first phase.
How many had that too?
Yeah, some of my guys met out there with the highway superintendent and stuff like that. And Ken, I think was out there with you?
When the sun was shining? When the sun was shining?
Yeah. Prime conditions.
TJ, what's the status of this one? Is it completed now or are there still...
No, it's not, it's closed.
Okay, all right, gotcha. All right. Once it leaves these cells, I have no idea what happens to it from there.
Will we do a final review or are you still working?
It's in pretty good shape, I think.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. But they don't have to get through anything here. Hopefully, we can review the negative deck at the next meeting and reapprove it. Because if they know, we're changing that.
I was going to say...
I don't want to do that without... Without...
Without what?
Without getting the negative deck approved.
Well, I mean, I had on my notes, and I guess Dylan can chime in if he wants, is that it's an unlisted action, right? Which is up to you if you want to do a coordinated review since we've already gone through it. You could declare, you could classify the action, describe yourself and agency and do the negative. I don't know, Dylan, do you disagree that you could...
No, I think unless there's something striking that pops up, I don't see why.
Right, nothing has changed?
In your position, we can re-approve it tomorrow?
I would say, well, no.
I mean, there's been no change.
There's been no change. So I don't see...
There's very little change.
Why should we have to, uh...
I wasn't listening, you were talking about mine or the prior ones.
No, yours.
Oh, in that case, I like it.
You like it, right? Okay, good.
Nothing against the, obviously, the reason it expired is not within your control.
Even though the OT for a long time has...
So that's what I'm saying, honestly, why we can't solve this tonight, so you don't have to come back and look.
Okay, so should we clarify something, the agency, elements of action?
Yeah.
You gotta close the written now, too.
What is that?
We left the written open, so now you gotta close it.
Okay, and a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Favor? Any against, do I have it? Next would be the negative deck, the committee agency status on this action, motion? Second?
Second.
All favor? Okay, so we've covered that.
Hold on, who's the first and the second?
Bobby Paul.
Let me get up, I'll be reading it.
It's recorded.
And Arthur, just again, for the record, we don't have to send it to 239 review because there's been no substantial changes.
Okay, so 239 is taking care of the old house. There's been no change in anything that would affect the environmental conditions for this one? Nothing changed?
Actually, we approved the drainage system, that's what I opened that up.
Oh, there we have it, so...
The water's always the same place as the old one.
Okay, given that it had a thorough environmental review on the last go-around, there's nothing, no change has been made. Okay, except the motion for a negative deck. Motion?
Motion.
Second? Favor? Any against? Any time, we have the negative deck. And we can use the original resolution to dispute for, you know, site plan approval.
Would that need to be redated then, Tom, the original resolution that you have?
Yeah, I'm going to bring it out.
We can just pop in amended, change things.
Yeah, nothing changing, I've got to bring that pretty simple.
Where did the entries now, where did they end up putting them down?
Same place, 1052 sides, 1042 sides.
Okay, so the same place.
Exactly.
We're looking for a motion to second approval based on the original question. A motion for the second?
Second.
All right, perfect, very good. Any against this for closing? All in favor? Any against?
None against.
Thank you very much.
Any answer? Revolve on the special permit cap?
Reasonable. No condition change? Usually it's all together, but, okay, a motion for a special use permit?
Motion.
Based on the last one. Second?
Second.
You guys are good team. All favor?
All right.
Any against?
So we all watch them up as well, do you?
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dylan.
Thank you.
Okay, Fordberg Fishing and Boney Club.
Good afternoon, I'm Fordberg, Fordberg Fishing and Boney Club. This was my associate, Bob Hammer. He had a emergency, and so I'm covering it for her. And I understand that everyone has a map of this line chain, the subdivision. Unfortunately, she dropped the map off on the dressing room board. This is basically a hundred and seventy-five acre fossil. I will hold it up this way. It's going to be divided into two fossils, one eighty point zero one acres and the other ninety-four point oh four acres. The one half of the fossil is going to be along Pleasure Lake. And the other fossil is going to be along Highland Road. And so this is basically a division of a hundred and seventy-five acres, million and a half, eighty point oh one and ninety-four point oh four.
Now, you're consolidating lots and then splitting them in a different direction?
Pardon?
We're consolidating separate lots, sixty-one dash twenty-eight point two, sixty dash one, there's one there, sixty point one. We're going to combine and then split on a different basis?
That's correct. While we're combining sixty dash one there fifty-nine into the...
That's a little bit...
Into, yeah, yes, that's a small one, seven point nine seven acre fossil which is included in the ninety-four point oh nine acre fossil. And that's going to be part of the same fossil. And then once again, it's basically divided in half, so ninety-four...
So let's, we have to do it in two steps? Because we're putting it together and coming in a different way?
Well, we're putting together sixty dash one there fifty-nine into what is a portion of sixty dash one there twenty-eight two and a portion of sixty dash one there sixty point one.
What is the reason to do this?
Well, the reason is easy, because they want to sell the eighty acre fossil and they want to retain the ninety-four point eight acre fossil, ninety-four point oh nine acre fossil. They want to sell the lot that's along Highland Road and there have been a number of lawyers to buy that property. And so they would have to divide it and sell it.
I'm trying to figure out how to word it. There's sixty... We have tax lot sixty-one there twenty-eight point two, tax lot sixty there's one there sixty-four one.
Let's do it this way.
Sixty there's one there fifty-nine.
Because you're losing a little bit.
So we're taking three lots and putting them together?
Okay, that's a point, yeah.
That's good, what, pardon?
We're combining sixteen there twenty-eight, sixty there's sixty point one, and sixteen dash one point five nine into one big lot. And then what we'll do is the second thing, will be to split the new lot into two parts based on the line you have running through it.
So... So whichever, yeah, so whichever way it works, it really doesn't matter as long as we get the division along this line I showed you.
I think you need to combine them while then moving back from the middle line.
So I think we have to combine sixty point one there fifty-nine into this large fossil which contains two separate tax lot numbers.
Sixty there's sixty point one?
Twenty-eight point two and sixty dash one.
All three need to be combined.
Pardon?
We need to combine all three first.
Okay.
Now, one feature on this I want to check out. Basically, the new lot that we created, it's going to be a flag lot with an entrance maybe what, seventy-five feet?
Well, yes, let me explain this a little bit. So the lot that is going to be ninety-four oh nine acres has this strip which, which a bus route forty-two. However, Fordberg Fishing and Boney Club is going to buy this adjacent parcel, which is presently owned by Lakeland Stinks, and that's one of the Enger properties. And this is eighteen point one nine acres. And this leads us directly to Lakeland Road. So not only will we have frontage on Route forty-two, but also we're going to have this parcel here, which is eighteen point one nine acres.
That's a later action, that's...
Well, right now, we're, right now, we're in contract for that. So I just want to explain that this is not going to be landlocked, and we don't care if it's landlocked.
It's not landlocked, that's a legal, that's seventy-five feet. If you left there, it's a viable lot.
Well, you know, what's going, we have access, but we don't really care that much. This is additional protection, but we own the lake. And this lake, this parcel is going to be owned by, it's owned by Pleasure Lake right now, which is the Fishing and Boney Club. So this parcel will never be sold. If, their intention is never to sell this lot, but make it part of the Fishing and Boney Club. They want to sell this lot, which they don't need. And, and the purpose of selling this lot is to raise some money so that it can buy the Enger property here and some other Enger lots. So that's the intention.
So the first thing is a motion to combine lots sixty there's one there's twenty-eight point two, lot sixty there's one point sixty point one, and lot sixty there's one there fifty-nine into one parcel.
That's correct.
Arthur, I think we have an issue with the flag lot. I believe we didn't start with the combination until we sort out the flag lot.
Well, the combination we can do, the splitting was the problem.
If the applicant wants you to go ahead and do the combination without the splitting, then I guess you can do it as a motion, but I would try to figure it all out before you make a motion, but that's just...
But it's all owned by the same party, so what's the...
The lot, lot that's the ninety-four oh nine acres, the only legal frontage it has is Lakeland Drive, which is a paper street and it's only fifty feet wide. The frontage for a viable lot is two hundred feet. So I don't see where there's two hundred feet along a public railway.
Well, we don't, we don't really need it. I would ask that that be waived because, once again, we have, we have access toward to a private road that's showing here on the map. And this is, we, we're not going to develop this property. It's not going to be developed other than for the uses of the fishing...
Yeah, but it exists as a lot.
Yeah.
It will exist as a lot, it has to be a legal lot at all times.
And is it going to be protected by a conservation easement or something?
No, no.
So ten years from now, they could sell it to somebody who wants to put it in their land prime home?
But if they want to sell this, then that sale could be rejected because it doesn't have sufficient frontage.
But we can't create a lot that doesn't conform, right?
Well, now they're buying this lot in the future. Corrector, are you in contract for that?
No, no, right now, we're in contract for this fossil over here, which actually, actually, we could, when we have title. We're not, we're not, we don't have title yet, we're in contract for this parcel. We're in contract for fifty-four there's two there's eight point one.
The northern parcel.
Yeah, top of the...
Well, that would solve the problem. Right, I can tell.
That, this parcel does not have frontage on forty-two, but it does have frontage on Lakeland Drive. This portion of Lakeland Drive is not yet developed, it right now... Right now, it's a cast, but further up, it's developed. And it's part of the Ingrah development down by, uh, down by, actually down by Pleasure Lake.
Lakeland Drive exists off the net.
Lakeland Drive exists off of this lot which we are going to buy. In fact, it's referred to here at the top of the map.
So if we had some guarantee that it would, it existed combined, then we could create a lot.
Well, I can represent, I can represent that we're in contract, the due diligence period ends tomorrow. Uh, we have a financing and we're on a contract to sell.
You were saying like.
Well, in no time can we have a legal lot because the process stops, it stops. So you have to combine the top lot.
I can't do it in my head.
54 point, there's 2 point 8.1 is to be in the future combined with this, this flag lot, correct?
Uh, yeah, oh, well, it will, I'm not sure if they want to make it a lot, but that's probably makes sense to combine it as one parcel, once we find it.
You get a legal lot out of that, right?
Yep.
He's got 4, it'd be a frontage when he buys the other piece of it. But every piece has a frontage you need. So when you purchase the other piece, then this makes this a viable lot if it's combined.
So you'll have to come back once the fishing club acquires that other piece. Otherwise, you can't make a lot that's not legal. You'd have to go to the ZBA and, right, request a variance for the frontage. I guess you could do that.
Well, this, I don't think the 18.19 parcel that we're buying does not have frontage on a public highway. It does, it does, it does, it does attach Lakeland Drive.
There's 400 feet of frontage along Lakeland, so that would make it a legal lot.
The other lot that you're buying has frontage on the.
So, yes, it does, you mean, in other words, instead of 42, you're going to go to Lakeland. And make it a legal lot.
Right.
Here, Ivan.
Because Lakeland's a town, town road.
Lakeland is a town road.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So it would have access to a town road, but once again, it's not, it's not 200 feet.
It is.
It's 400 feet.
It's like 460.
Come look at the map, because you don't have any other parcel.
No, 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 this is, this is.
See, if this parcel you acquire.
Yeah, this is a parcel that we're buying.
Yep, that's 400 feet, so you would have at least 400 feet of frontage on a public road, that solves the problem.
Okay, you mean 400 feet leftwise. So I, obviously, I was, I was thinking, I was thinking that leftwise, okay.
Yep.
So.
It'd be a big entrance.
Okay, so we'll come back then when we're, so we'll come back when we acquire the 18.
And that'll be a lot easier.
Okay, good.
What's that, oh, my, what's your thoughts?
For some reason, I thought that narrow across went to a public road.
Thank you, bud.
You got it, Ivan.
Well, this is.
Did you meet it too?
This worked out well. If you go home and wax and jam.
Well, that's, that's a guarantee.
We're going to run it out for tonight, don't worry.
It's complicated.
The structure is pretty simple.
Yeah, yeah.
When you start looking at everything and you get confused, that's.
Yeah, it kind of fell apart there, I don't know that.
Yeah.
Even if I could, I could, I might include it. We get all guys.
Your name, sir? I'm Tony Siciliano. I'm here on behalf of the Kozajanski and Seckert Lot Improvement.
Let's see what I can do to make this.
Yeah. The only thing that's all complicated are, it's really simple.
Yes, this is a simple one, I think. And what we're proposing here is a 10-point, it's a lot improvement between two adjoining owners. Uh, we're going to remove 10.31 acres from tax lot, uh, 4.4, which has frontage out on Moore Road. So when it's all said and done, that lot will still contain 12.6 acres after we remove the 10. And the 10.3 is going to be added on to lot 4.6, which is owned by the Seckert Family Trust. Steven Fekes here tonight. I have a question for him. It's simple, starting with two lots and ending with two lots, just making one a little bigger at the expense of the other. Everything still adheres to, you know, minimum lot sizes and all that. Like I said, you have 12.6 acres left on the vacant parcel, that's losing 10 acres.
So the piece that's losing 10 acres, what's the SPL number?
That's, um, uh, 4.4. Owned by Kozajanski, the Pauline Kozajanski Irrevocable Trust.
3 dash 1 dash 4.4.
Correct. And the, it's going to be added to 3 dash 1 dash 4.6.
Okay, and how many acres is 4.4?
Uh, 4.4 existing right now is 22.9.
So it'll be 12.9.
So it'll be 12.6 when it's, yes. Which is on there.
And that has, yeah, that has road frontage?
Correct. It's a vacant parcel with road frontage on, on Moore Road. The Seckert parcel that's being added also has frontage on Moore Road.
And 4.6 is how much right now?
Um, 4.6 is, uh, let me put, how many acres?
17.
17.
17.96 is what the.
That'll be 26.
So we're going to break 4.4 into two pieces, one of which is 10.31 acres, and the other one will be the remains of it.
Right, which is 12, remaining will be 12.6.
That's the first action is to break that. The second action is to combine the 10.31 acres that have been created with the existing 3, 4, 3 dash 1 dash 4.6.
Correct.
So it's actually two different motions.
Yeah, that's going to be, um, you know, we're not creating a new lot here, we're just adding on it to, to the existing.
Right. So I think the first thing is to break the piece off and then combine the two.
Arthur likes to do it in two distinct steps, so.
It's easy to say.
That's true, but make your first motion.
Okay, um, first of all, it's a type 2 action. Therefore, we don't have to do CECA. So the motion will be to break, uh, lot 3 dash 1 dash 4.4 into two pieces, one of which is 10.31 acres, and the remainder will be 12.6 acres. We have a motion?
Motion.
Second? That's second, okay. All in favor?
All right.
Any against? Okay, so we've now created the 10.31 acre lot, which we are going to move to combine with the SPL 1 dash 4.6. This is 17 acres. You two are doing it right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so a motion to combine the two lots?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any against? Do all the working. Done.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too, thank you.
With the new board members consideration, under CECA type 2 action, we don't have to do anything. If we're giving a minor, then you don't have to go on or do, if we attract one action or unlisted action, then we'd have to give a negative action.
We like to. Let's do it from out here.
Okay, the sun is open. Glen Wild here, keep holding for. Let's review a special authority to allow a sanitation operation. Are there violations on this property? Anything?
Yes.
Yep.
What do we need to know?
Just that they're operating wherever safe.
And that this is going to act to do, that this would change that. This would cure the violation.
Yes.
If we accept it. And what about the use?
Can you just state your name for the?
Yes, Tim Gottlieb, Joseph Gottlieb, PD, DC.
Is it okay if I ask him to just describe a little bit of the operations, what actually is happening on the parcel?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Or determine whether it fits the, the use that they're requesting.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping to do.
Yeah.
The use would be an office and storage of vehicles, parking of vehicles, storage of roll-offs and dumpsters for their daily use at, I think, sanitation operation.
Is this industrial?
It is industrial. Sanitation operations are permitted, I think, via special permit.
Yes.
But the problem is, is that it's listed on the bulk table as an allowable use, but it's not defined anywhere in the zoning code. So it's, it's hard to tell exactly what makes a sanitation operation versus a transfer station versus, you know, something else. And I think that was one of the things, I think we discussed early on with court enforcement, is that we may actually need some sort of.
There's dumpsters stored there, there's garbage trucks stored there, the, the whole summer, they ran it like a garage sale out of there.
Right. So Dylan, well, why don't you describe the operations and then we'll figure out if it fits.
Basically, they would run one of the, it's basically a satellite office of nonsense sanitation. They've got dispatch trucks out of there, pick up dumpsters for delivery. There'll be no, you know, full dumpsters stored there or anything.
How do we know that?
I would leave that out of the picture because they picked it up on the Saturday and wasn't able to get to the dump, it'd be on the back of the truck. I wouldn't say that, I would guess leave that out there.
So TJ, what's, what's happening on the site now? Is there any storage of garbage or refuse or anything, or is it just empty containers and vehicles?
There's a bulk cardboard fan up there.
Okay.
Yeah, there's storage containers there, you know, the cargo containers. There's a camper on the property, you know, for sale. There was a guy who used to own it before, who just used the offices and the building for a storage thing. He rented out inflatables, you know, like backseat houses and stuff. So you never even really knew he was there, you know, and he, he kept everything inside a building. Actually, he, he had gotten so big that he had built a garage on his house and started storing stuff in his house also. But now he's gone, he moved far and stuff like, now it's just like a mishmash of storage of stuff, you know, and again.
Well, that's the junkyard next to it.
The original, there's truck sales or something.
Right. That was Elliot.
Yeah.
The one next to it, yeah, is, is a, is a junkyard and they sell cars and stuff like that, you know.
Well, outdoor storage of machinery and equipment is also a permitted use in the industrial district. So, you know, it could be sort of like a dual use place.
It's a wide open site.
Right, yeah.
We keep screening or something on that.
And I think that's why he's here, right, is that?
Yes, gets some input from the board as to what you'd like to see on the site.
So Dylan, is the first step, the building department making a determination, you know, as to whether or not it is a sanitation operation, and then the applicant can go to the ZBA if they disagree with the building department's determination? Because right now, we're, we're kind of lost, we have nothing to go on, right?
Yeah, so typically, that would be the first step is, you know, TJ is CEO, would give a determination saying, you know, based on these facts, this is how this project fits into the definitions in the bulk table. And then depending on what that is, if you like the answer, then you can accept it and forward. If you don't, you would be able to go to the ZBA to actually appeal the determination.
So this is a good teaching moment, Arthur, right? Because you were talking about if it's not on the bulk table, it's not permitted. In this case, it's on the bulk table, but we don't know what it means, right? So when, when you have that kind of situation, it, from a legal perspective, it is the normal and typical, what's the phrase that you attorneys use when saying, you know, like, normal and typical definitions, like what are the reasonable in this test? Or am I just bad on it?
No, I think reasonable test is a good way to look at it. Yeah, and that's, so as a planning board, you have no authority to make a determination. So even if you look at the facts and you're like, oh, this clearly is a sanitation facility, you wouldn't be able to determine that, it would have to be TJ, he's got the authority to do that. Or there could be original jurisdiction through the ZBA. But it's definitely easier to ask TJ and then that provides a second level to actually appeal.
They go all the way up to Fallsbury Gas?
Uh, there's roll-offs, oh, I don't know where the line is, but it's like right on the driveway, we're letting you go into, you know, so I don't know how far that property was over.
Because there was another place on the other side where they were dumping stuff in there.
In between this property and the gas.
Gas and the other.
Down in the back there, they were dumping materials.
Yes.
So that could just be an access road to get to that lot in the back, you know?
Is that also on that lot?
It, it, because he runs a property line. That would be this property line, like down here, you know? That's 10, the one at the bottom of the page. Down here? This side?
Fallsburg Gas, Miss Fallsburg Gas.
Well, go to the big map. Oh, you have the building. So that line there. They have roll-offs down over there or something. Yeah, there's, there's a couple of containers here. Yeah, right there. On the property. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know, I, I would imagine it's on their property. I hope it is, it is on their property, you know?
So that property that's directly to the south of them, it looks like it's connected to the property across the street that has all the junk cars and stuff, is that correct, TJ?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's the same.
Yeah, the, the junkyard owns both sides of the street.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the next lot, huh?
Gotcha.
Yeah, they, they take all their junk cars up on top of the hill there, you know?
Yeah, but I was talking the other way.
Yeah.
The other, okay.
No, I know what you're talking about, yeah, between a propane place and stuff.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay. Well, you can't control the neighbors, I guess, right?
Because it showed that that property touches church road, correct?
I'm not sure.
Which property are you talking about?
This piece.
This piece? Just frontage on Glen Wild, doesn't touch church road.
No, I don't, I don't think it goes that far.
Nope.
How big is it, Tim?
2.1 acres.
Yeah, 2.1 acres, it's not touching church road.
It's on Glen Wild.
Yeah.
So the next step is for TJ to put in writing what he thinks, what he determined the uses.
Exactly, and then we can take it from there.
Or what if, oh, what if they determine, like, it was just for storage, or, or they said if they went by the bulk table, if they picked something out of the bulk table?
Well, I think they have chosen sanitation operation as what they think is the closest fit to what they're doing. So what you need to do is, you know, think about their operations and what's actually going on on the site. And then make a determination as to whether or not you think that, you know, fits a reasonable definition of sanitation operation. Because it's not, unfortunately, it's not defined in the code, so there's nothing you can point to and say the words say this. So you just have to kind of use, make it a judgment.
Well, if it's going to be this sanitation operation and stuff like that, I wouldn't think that you should have a camper for sale there. I don't think that you should be doing the garage sale there. I mean, they had signs right on the road, it's a garage sale, and the stuff was all outside, so it wasn't like they were hiding it, you know what I mean?
So, I mean, if.
As far as the rest of the stuff that's on site, you can go hand in hand with the sanitation, you know?
So for example, not to put pressure on you, but if like 75% of what they're doing fits your, you know, the SNIP test in terms of the sanitation operation, but there are certain things that they're doing that doesn't, then that's something that we can address because it's a special permit use during site plan review to say, okay, you can't do garage sales, you can't do this, you need to put a fence there, you can't have these containers, you know, right here, open to public.
Yeah, that would be my advice to them.
Yeah, so the first step. Yeah, so the first step.
You can't, you know.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, the first step is, right, does it pass the SNIF test? Does the majority of what they're doing, does it, does it fit into, you know, the definition of what a reasonable person would consider to be a sanitation operation? And then we can kind of go from there.
It's not that time of year, so first thing, it's not going to be over July, so you're not going to really get a good SNIF test.
Well, TJ's been there, though, because he knows what's there.
I haven't really seen like actual garbage there. I can't contest that the trucks are not full, but they don't seem to have moved since the first time, you know, I've looked at the property. They have, like I said, they have the containers, like we were talking about, the roll off. And again, I know what you're going to say, it might happen later on, but, uh, which, again, you know, I've, I've dealt with Paul when I was in Thompson, too, so, um, there's, there's garbage trucks over on, there's the dumpsters on the property line that we're thinking of. And then going towards Rock Hill, there's a couple of garbage trucks there, smaller ones, not the big ones. And I don't know, they don't seem to have moved all summer long. So maybe he's just storing them there, I don't know. And again, you know, this is, you know.
Would it be helpful if Dylan and I did some researching, could come up with some definitions from other communities? How they define it, so that you can?
Yeah, if you, if you'd want, that would help.
Yeah, and I think one of the kind of rule of thumb is if there's no definition, the Merriam-Webster dictionary is a place to go, so you could look up sanitation and, you know, we can help you on that.
At least that way you're not, you know, again, I know, it's, you know. Balls on your shoulders, though, that's where you get paid the big bucks, is to make these tough decisions.
And then we have to talk about what it's going to look like.
Right, once we determine whether or not it's a permitted use.
Yeah, because it's wide open site, and we're going to have garbage trucks.
If it is determined a sanitation operation, they have to go to ZBA for the lot size and the
True.
rear yard, right?
Yeah, they need three acres.
Yeah, and it's not two point nineteen.
Right, and it's not a pre-existing operation, right? It's not, it was grandfathered, this is a new use for the property, so.
When is the acreage of this complete lot?
Two point nineteen.
You have two point one.
Two point one nine, technically, the bulk table says you need two acres.
Twenty-five, twenty-five point three.
No, no, I don't think you're looking at the right lot.
He's looking at the lot behind, Paul, you're looking at the lot behind, see the one that's shaded?
Oh, no, he's looking at the SPL number. Twenty-five point three, yes.
Twenty-five point three, yes.
It says location.
Yeah, it's two point one.
What I was, what I was trying to say is, the lot behind it, that's twenty point six acres, has nothing to do with that, correct?
Nope, yeah.
This, this was part of what they made as an industrial park, or a building. When it, you know, it's one of those lots that figured Elliot's, track, car sales, attracting stuff there. And they made that, these industrial, at the very least, they should be able to store empty containers there rather than empty garbage trucks.
Right.
If they're not sticking right out of, out of the road.
Yeah.
You have to see, you have to see.
Long as the juice has someplace in the garbage.
These acres are.
We're, we're not going to tell you what it should look like, you're going to tell us? How are you going to make it look?
Absolutely, we had to get through that.
Right, just a feature flaw.
We'll come back with revised site name to show a lot more information.
We have to go to ZBA?
Yeah, because you don't. Sorry?
Does he have to be denied, you got it?
Uh, TJ can deny it.
TJ can deny it?
For what, there's one more?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, or you guys.
Well, if you make the determination, you can also pay the ZBA sometime.
Simply fuse the bed.
Yeah, that's all right.
That's a good assignment, so you can get information. That's a good assignment to the ZBA.
Well, because you're going to have to go to the ZBA, so I want to make sure that.
Because even if they get it, it must, and you don't have the size.
Yeah, and just based on timing, it wouldn't be until December anyway, so.
Yeah.
So it should be done before, time wise.
So TJ will make a determination within the next, like, week or so, right? And depending upon, and that gets done in writing, right? And then depending upon his determination, you will add it to the ZBA for a use variance and an area variance, or just an area variance?
Okay.
Sound right?
Yep. So we'll wait to hear from TJ.
Yep.
Man of the hour.
Yep.
Thank you.
If you don't hear from TJ, then TJ will call.
What's that?
I'll make the one email. I'll, I'll make sure TJ, he'll, he'll have it.
He knows where I am. Your turn, Joel.
Hi, no alcohol?
No.
It's a very late night for Joel tonight.
That's true.
Please state your name for the recording.
Sure. Right. Right.
What do you intend to do with that lot?
Single tally hole.
You're going to have to show us if it fits.
So.
Sound rough.
The same sheet.
So this is Kenbelt, obviously, it's on Eastbound Road and Bearland Road. It's a hundred eighty-two plus acre parcel, which, about a hundred eighty acres, is on the north side of Eastbound Road, and two point four seven acres is on the south side of Eastbound Road. What they're looking to do is to subdivide the property so that the two point four seven acre portion is its own lot. The property is in the back zoning district, which requires three acre lots. If you don't have municipal or public water, then sue it. This does not mean that three acre lot, so therefore, we need to go to the zoning board to get a variance for that. We, we do have on sheet two, as the chairman pointed out, he wants to see what it's going to look like. So there's a house proposed on sheet two, which shows the setbacks, meaning that it's a long now lot, and we will not be able to fit the, anything within setbacks, because the minimum setback is seventy-five foot front and thirty foot rear yard setback, which leaves nothing to be built. Similar to other lots on Eastbound Road, the houses are recessed between forty to fifty feet or so. So we are going to ask the ZBA, it's for a front yard variance of forty-four feet and a rear yard variance of forty-five foot and eight inches versus fifty feet. So that's what we're looking, so all that we're looking tonight is for a denial from the planning board, unless we have any other inputs, I'd rather take that.
What, what is, where's the A frame house?
Where?
Now past there.
There's not, there's not, there's nothing on this side. Nothing on this side.
It's to the left, to the left.
The A frame house on the right field.
We're not going to break this lot out until you can show us the plot.
Right, right, right.
Plot?
I'm just making you happy. We, we're not, we can't do anything until it's live a lot, to be live a lot, it has to get variance into the ZBA, go for it and have fun.
Thank you.
Um, Yoli, can I just let you know that there are some expired permits on the parcel that need to be cleared up? People called Diane, can I go over there and report, please?
Motion on to deny the application based on the area.
Motion.
Second? Second.
Who's the first?
Buck.
Buck.
And Buck, you've been getting good.
No, Mike, Mike one.
Mike, okay.
Good evening, you turned down.
Thank you. You're getting good. You sound happy for that.
So you waited all evening listening to us.
I don't mind listening to you on that, I don't mind listening to you, and I have my work table in the back.
Who has the sign in?
Right here. You got a, Mike asked.
You're assigned this one, too, you're going to have the other one.
You have one being activated?
Okay, thank you.